It being September 25th, 2019, 7:11 PM. We're here for a public hearing, for the continued public hearing for Amanda Estates. It's the only agenda item for a special planning board hearing. Do we have a motion to reopen the continued public hearing?
Make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So as a member not being at the previous hearings, I have reviewed the videos and I am up to date with what's happened in the past and happy to sign whatever certifications I need to, whether or not that needs to be done now or later. So as I'm doing this, I know there was a couple outstanding issues at the last hearing. Has there been any advancement on those? I know one of the questions about recusal was up.
Yep, so since then I have contacted the ethics board and I was informed that there is no conflict and I will not be accusing myself.
Okay, very good. Is there any new or additional information that anybody would like to provide from either party or from the public at this time?
I would, if appropriate, Mr. Sculpey.
Sure.
My name is Adam Brodsky and I represent the party trust. With me this evening are Amanda Monte and Ed Johnson, who are trustees. I know that you've reviewed the video. I'm happy to give a brief summary to let you know where we left things off if you'd like, or I can simply move forward and address some additional information.
Yeah, if you'd like to give a brief summary, that'd be great.
I'll do my best. As you like me to know, Amanda Estates is a 12-unit multifamily development that was approved by this board via site plan approval in 2014. The infrastructure has been constructed and four units constructed. It's located off of Elm Street and Gordon C. Andrews, who's a chairman and a plaintiff in the related litigation, lives next door at 244 Elm Street. The project was approved with six duplex units for a total of 12 units in compliance with the specific requirements for multifamily development with Section 167-12 of your bylaw. Each of those units also meets the setback requirements in 167-12, particularly 12A5. The project is owned by a condominium association. The condominium documents were reviewed and approved by the town and the intention is to have the condominium association own the large parcel, the common area, and that the individual unit owners own each of the units. 2014 site plan approval, 2015 ZBA special permit, and the special permit incorporates the conditions of the site plan approval. There are no appeals of those permits at that time. As I mentioned, the project had been substantially built. In order to build the particular units in 2017, we obtained building permits and the four building permits for the individual units were appealed by Mr. Andrews. Mr. Andrews challenged those building permits. The ZBA affirmed the issuance of the building permits. Mr. Andrews brought suit against the zoning board of appeals as well as party trust in September of 2017. The land court did not like the decision of the ZBA affirming the building inspector's issue for building permits and so he remanded it back to the ZBA for further consideration in July 2018. And again, the ZBA affirmed its decision, issued a more complete decision in August of 2018. In January of this year, the parties engaged in summary judgment where the judge entered, actually judgment in favor of the ZBA, the party trust determining that the specific provisions of 167-12A govern this project and not the more general provisions of 167-10. But the land court reserved for trial the issue as to whether the site plan approval and the special permit by their own terms required the subdivision of the larger parcel so that you'd have each building on a separate lot. We've always maintained that that's not a requirement of 167-7D2, I should be able to do this by heart, 167-7D2A. And Mr. Andrews disagreed. There was a trial in May of this year and the court ultimately held that a site plan approval, and these were the land court's words, "for the moment," required the party lot to create individual lots. The land court did not enter any remedy, didn't order us to take anything down, and essentially invited us to come back to the town to try and remedy this problem. And so I'm trying to figure out a way of explaining this more simply, but I have copies of the site plan approval from 2014 and it's helpful for me to sort of start at the beginning. Town council, do you need a copy?
Sure.
Thank you. So this is the actual letter granting site plan approval in September of 2014. And you see, there's no condition in that decision that says that the party trust is required to subdivide the property, but there is reference to 167-D2 in the second-to-last power act. But more importantly, attached to the site plan approval is a copy of the plan that was signed off on by the planning board. This is not the original plan that was submitted with the application to the planning board. That original plan actually had no lot lines shown on it. But you may or may not remember that the planning board requested that lines be placed on the plan. Party trust agreed to do it and those lines. It was never party trust intention to subdivide the property into separate lots for a variety of reasons, which I can talk about in a moment. We don't think it was required in the bylaw and is entirely contrary, in our view of the world, to actually having a condominium own this project. And you might remember condominiums are expressly discussed in 167-12, which is the specific requirements for multifamily development. So faced with this, we had two choices. How do we fix this problem? And I think that there were two ways of doing this. One, we could assume that 167-7D2A requires a subdivision of the property and ask that the planning board waive that requirement because this planning board actually has done it before for another project. That was the Halifax Trails project in 2016, which was a 26-unit multifamily development. That was originally permitted, the permits lasted. They had a new development team, including a new lawyer. When they came back to the board, their new lawyer said, hey, listen, this makes no sense to subdivide this property. This is a multifamily development to be owned in a condominium. And ultimately, the planning board agreed and granted a waiver for that project in connection with its permit. So that was, that's the subject of the modification. We thought that the easiest way forward would simply ask the planning board to do what they've done in the past and grant the waiver. The other way of doing this is by coming to the conclusion that 167-D2A actually does not require the subdivision of the property and the planning board can simply execute a new plan. That plan would not show the lot lines. So when we submitted our application, we submitted to you a plan that has the waiver on it and without the lot lines. But we also have tonight a second set of plans, including the bylaw. And simply the same plan, there are no lot lines on it and we took the waiver off of that. Ultimately, the board decides that it's not appropriate to grant a waiver. So we think that there are two ways of doing this. We didn't want to present an either-or scenario when we presented the application. We thought this was confusing to begin with. But Mr. Andrews takes the position that the board doesn't have the ability to waive that requirement. And that's where we left off at the first hearing, which was a request for town council to weigh in on that issue. Again, I am familiar with 167-28. It's actually entitled Site Plan Requirements. There are two sections that deal with waivers. This board has previously decided that it has the authority to grant waivers. If it's going to decide tonight that it doesn't have the ability to do that, I don't know where that leads. The other project that was granted a waiver. I'm of the viewpoint that planning boards can actually grant waivers of site plan review. I know a number of towns which will determine that in instances which don't warrant site plan review at all, that the planning board has the ability to waive the complete requirement of site plan review. So we're comfortable and confident that the board does have legal authority to waive site plan, which we believe is appropriate in this instance for all of the same reasons that were discussed during the Halifax Trails matter, which is that it was never really, we don't think that bylaw was ever intended to do it, to do that. We have a condominium form of ownership that was reviewed and approved by town council to actually put each of the, you know, each building on a separate lot. It's contrary to conveyancing practice for condominiums. I've spoken, I'm not a conveyancing attorney, but I've spoken with all of the conveyancing attorneys in my firm, and their opinion is consistent with council for Halifax Trail, which from a conveyancing point of view, that it doesn't make a lot of sense. It also doesn't make a lot of sense under your bylaw because your bylaw has a separate use for multifamily dwellings and apartments. And so within the AR district, which is where this property is located, you can presently have a multifamily dwelling or apartment via special permit, separate and distinct, separately defined from multifamily development. They're defined differently in your definitions. And a multifamily dwelling or apartment via the special permit and governed by the requirements of bylaw would actually have to be on an individual lot. Each of those lots would have all of your lot area requirements. And so there's already a vehicle to have a multifamily dwelling or apartment on a single subdivision lot under your zoning bylaws. It would make no sense to require a multifamily development regulated specifically under 167-12 as identified by the judge. That would also require each building on a separate lot, meeting all of the subdivision requirements, frontage and whatnot. Essentially renders your multifamily development bylaw meaningless because you can already get that relief with a special permit for a multifamily dwelling or apartment. We believe that the multifamily development bylaw was intended to be a multifamily development bylaw where you have a large tract of land with a minimum lot area. You're giving flexibility to the developer to locate the multifamily buildings on that area. The idea is to preserve open space. You have certain minimum setbacks between buildings and whatnot, but it's an entirely different beast which is intended to promote the development of large parcels and I presume to have some variety of housing within a town. If you're going to require every lot to be subdivided to meet your subdivision requirements, you're going to get cookie cutter houses on each lots. So we think that that interpretation of the bylaw is not consistent with what we believe the intent of the bylaw is. So as I said, we have sort of, we have the additional plan sort of presented to you in two ways. One, please grant us a waiver of the requirement, if you believe that the requirement requires the subdivision of the property such that we are required to put each building on a separate lot, consistent with Halifax Trails. Or two, if you're not comfortable granting a waiver, that you can make the determination that in fact 167-D2 does not require the physical subdivision of these properties, of the property into separate lots, and you can endorse the second plan that we have. That would allow us then to go back to the judge and say, listen, the planning board has modified its decision and therefore our project is consistent with the site plan approval from 2014. As a corollary issue, the judge found that the special permit doesn't contain any special conditions regarding subdivision either, but because it incorporates the requirements of site plan review, you know, that's why it was also discussed at the trial. Our view of the world is that if we fix the site plan approval, we then fix our special permit and that then allows us to complete the project as it was originally intended and approved in 2014.
Okay, so just to clarify, the two routes that you would like us to consider is, one is we essentially grant a variance on the requirement to have lot lines under our jurisdiction under site plan review?
Yeah, so I do not believe-
Which is the current application in front of us?
It's not a variance. You know, a variance is a variance of a zoning bylaw requirement that would be granted by the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
It's different. You have a waiver provision within site plan requirements, so it's a waiver of your requirement because the planning board, in connection with the planning board's site plan approval, required that we put the lots on the plan.
Okay, so it's a waiver of the lot line requirement. The other one is a interpretation that the lot line requirement as written in the zoning is not applicable?
That 176-7D2, which says that you're supposed to locate each building on a lot-
Yep.
-is not a requirement that you actually physically subdivide a lot and place a building on it. The word subdivision actually doesn't appear in that bylaw. It says locate. And so I think that, I don't know why that says that, but it can be read consistently and I'm sure the building commission can speak to this. You can read that consistently with 167-12 because the whole purpose, we believe, of those requirements is density. You know, you're only allowed to have one building per acre.
Right, per acre, yep.
And so to locate, you can read 167-7D consistent with 167-12 to show that, yes, we meet the density requirement because each of the buildings is on a 40,000 square foot parcel land. That, the fact that it says locate doesn't require the actual subdivision of the larger parcel in individual lots.
Okay, so just so that we understand the request there, that one is an interpretation that the lots, as shown on the plan, are just graphical for whatever purposes?
Legal description? I'm sorry?
For possible legal description?
Well, we, no, we think it was done to show the density. We need to show, we need to assure you that we have, we have one building on 40,000 square feet and then you need to show the buildings in relationship to each other because the setbacks are not from the property law in your bylaw. The setbacks are between the buildings under 167-12.
Right.
So it's interesting that that's the way it was written, which is consistent with how we review the bylaw. It was never intended to have setbacks from a front rear side yard. Those setbacks, if I recall correctly, are from, you have to have 100 feet between the buildings.
And there are rear yard setbacks, or are other setbacks here?
Correct.
But I don't think there is a side yard setback, to your point. So then, to the verbiage you were using originally, would you then believe that the first requirement is a subdivision to create the lots, using the wording you were using there?
That was the judge's wording, is that the site plan approval required the subdivision of the parcel to show each building on a lot. That was what was argued by Mr. Andrews to the land court.
And that is what the judge's determination was, that the lot-
That's right. He said that your site plan approval, and again, as I mentioned, the actual approval doesn't say that.
Yep.
But there's a plan attached to it that shows lot lines.
Yep.
And the judge interpreted that to be, you know, an indication of necessity to subdivide. So we need to get rid of the lines because we think that that's inconsistent with what the bylaw required. And as I mentioned, I think there are two ways of doing that. We thought the easiest path was simply to ask the planning board to do what it's done in the past, which is waive the requirement. But if ultimately the planning board decides that it does not have, you know, the right to do that, the other way of doing it is to simply essentially approve a modification of the approved subdivision plan, excuse me, site plan approval plan without the lines.
Okay. Town council is here today. I guess I'd like to know whether or not there's a determination on whether or not the planning board has the authority or is in a position to grant these kind of waivers that are being requested, or if that's something that should be in the zoning board's purview.
Sure, thank you. Any questions on the KPL? So unfortunately, that is, it's very complicated because the zoning bylaw has a couple discrepancies. So if you look at the definition of multifamily development, it says a development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land under one ownership of not less than 10 acres in size. So that, in my opinion, clearly says that it's one lot and you have, you can have as many units as you can fit on that lot, but it's one lot. And then you turn to, you turn to 7D and it's, I don't want to say it says the opposite, but it's very confusing. It says, "It's required that any multifamily development complex proposed hereunder shall include each building on an individual lot, which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way." So my issue with that statement is that it says an individual, it says each building on an individual lot. However, if you, the rest of the clause, which says, "shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way," I think that that's going back to referring to the one lot. So as long as your 10-acre lot has frontage on a public way, you can put a multifamily development there. But this is written in the bylaw, we can't get away from it. It's currently in the bylaw right now. At the last meeting, I suggested some bylaw changes that we should think about next time.
And we actually do, we have proposed some changes and they're in discussion and I don't think anybody disputes that it's very confusing.
Yes, yeah. So I think it would, it would make everything, everything better if perhaps we thought about those changes. However, so it, from what I've heard tonight, it appears that Attorney Brodsky is looking for two things. The first thing is for the planning board to somehow waive 7D and that, my answer to that would be that you do not have the authority to do that. It's in the bylaw, it's listed in the bylaw, and if you feel that it needs to be waived, so if you are going to interpret 7D as each building has to be on an individual lot, its own lot, meaning its own lot, that has to be waived by the zoning board of appeals because it is a requirement of the bylaw. And then to further complicate things, the zoning board of appeals, in essence, has already weighed in on that because there was an appeal, the building inspector denied enforcement based on the fact that, it's my understanding, based on the fact that he is reading 7D to say that it's one large lot to put, you have to, everything has to be put on one large lot owned by one owner. And the zoning board of appeals has already upheld the building inspector. That, of course, is still in litigation. I have read Judge Vay's decision numerous times. I'm working on probably my 730th reading of the decision. It's not a very easy decision to get through. I just realized this whole thing makes me sound like I'm not very smart because I keep saying things are confusing and it takes me a long time to get through things, but it really was a very confusing decision. And he has not opined on that either. He has not, in my opinion, he has not come to a decision as to whether 7D-A, what it means.
Which provision is that specifically?
And that's the one, that's the one that's actually, that's not the definition of multifamily development. It's actually in the bylaw and that one, that's the one that says, "It is required that any multifamily development complex proposed hereunder shall locate each building on an individual lot, which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way." So that to me, and again, and I actually, we took over as land use council only a couple years ago, so we are not involved in the trial. But that to me seems like that is the actual essence of the case. That's the key point of this whole in court case and Judge Vay did not come to a conclusion on that. So essentially, there, the second request of Attorney Brodsky is something that you can entertain, which is, do you even have to make a decision on site plan because you don't, you don't, it's my opinion that you don't have the authority to waive 7D-A. So the next thing that he's asking is that, I guess, I think what I heard is, does the planning board just say, "We agree with the zoning board of appeals and we don't think that lot lines are needed, but you're not waiving anything?" So-
So that specific thing, again, lot lines being needed, is that just we would be of the position that subdivision of the land in order to create legal lots is not required because a lot is not defined well in the zoning? Is that what we're trying to make a determination of, what is the definition of a lot?
No, actually, actually, the planning board really isn't the board that would interpret 7D-A.
Okay.
The board that interprets 7D-A is the zoning board of appeals. But actually, I'm sorry, it's first the building inspector. The building inspector or the zoning enforcement officer, however, it's listed in the zoning bylaw. They interpret the bylaw. If there's any question as to whether the interpretation was correct or not, you appeal it to the zoning board of appeals, which is exactly what Mr. Andrews did. He did the correct thing. And the zoning board of appeals upheld the building inspector and then Mr. Andrews did again the correct thing. He appealed that to the land court. So what should happen, the next step, is that the land court decides whether that interpretation was correct or not. The land court did not do that in this case. So the land court basically said, well, site plan is wrong, so you have to fix, essentially, they said, "Site plan is wrong. The applicant has taken this route to come to the planning board to somehow fix site plan." I don't know if that's the route I would have taken, but it's, he's the applicant, or they're the applicant and they have the ability to do that. They have the right to seek relief from the planning board if you think that you can give that relief.
Okay, so it sounds like the first option, the position that we can't grant waivers for the requirement-
Of 7D.
-of the current application. So hence the modified application of the interpretation of the lot lines. So then specifically there, what would be the component of the zoning that we are interpreting? Just whether or not it's reasonable? Because the language seems to be specific.
Correct, so, so under 28, under section 28 of the zoning bylaw, which is site plan approval-
Yep.
-there is a requirement that says that you have to show, I think it's, it's a 4, so it's 28, 4, 1. It said, "The site plan and other drainage, uh, site plan and other drawings necessary shall precisely indicate the following: area of the site, boundary lines, dimensions of the lot." But I assume that's what he's, the second thing that he's seeking is to be waived? I don't know that for sure though. He didn't cite this section.
I guess, could we clarify? Because my understanding was that the plan would look the same, there would be no lot lines on the plan, and you would like us to interpret the definition of a lot as to not be a legal lot?
No, and I'm grateful for town council because I think she articulated the zoning component better than I did. So the ZBA has already interpreted the bylaw to be consistent with our view, which is 176-7D. It does not require a subdivision of the parcel to locate each building on a lot. So I think that issue has been decided and relies upon the ZBA's interpretation of the bylaw. We're simply asking the planning board to endorse a plan that shows no lot lines, which would be consistent with the ZBA's interpretation as well as the building commission's interpretation that was developed during the course of the litigation. And I agree with town council that judge didn't answer that issue one way or the other. The judge was focused on the physical site plan approval, which is why I handed you a copy to try and, you know-
Right.
...to focus me on that. So we're asking you simply to approve a modification of the existing site plan to remove those lot lines because they're not required- lot lines because they're not required under the ZBA and the Building Commissioner's reading of 176 7D 2.
But if I remember correctly, there was a determination a few years back that actually required the plan to be resubmitted because it was originally submitted without lot lines, right? And then it was resubmitted with the lot lines asked.
You're correct, you're completely correct. Their first plan, I had them modify.
Please let him give...
So I don't believe that that was correct. It was during the course of the site plan review that the Planning Board told our engineer to put the lines on the plan. I know, I know that there was a later modification of the plan. What happened was is that the plan changed because to accommodate Mr. Andrews, we shifted the driveway over.
Okay.
And so we had to go back to ZBA to get them to modify their decision to reflect the fact that the plan was changed. And then we came back to Planning Board to have you once again approve the plan, but I believe, and my little correction, if I'm mistaken, is that it was during the original proceedings that the Planning Board said, "Hey, listen, Joe Webby put the lines..."
For the lines on the plan, for approval.
Right. So the lines on the plan were done as part of the original approval in 2014. And the later plan modification simply had to do with relocating the driveway and the sidewalk on the other side of the driveway.
Okay, but if I remember correctly, I feel like there was a determination by somebody that indicated that the houses did need to be on lots at that time, regardless of whether or not the current judge has not made a ruling on it. And it sounds like our current Town Council also...
I'm not aware of any decision to that effect. I mean, all I can tell you, I wasn't...
Not a, my understanding was there was some letter issued by Town Council or some other party at that time.
If I may.
So there were various opinions by Town Council regarding the interpretation of the bylaw. We respectfully suggest that Town Council was mistaken and I'll defer to Town Council on this. I've often seen boards not agree with Town Council regarding the interpretation of zoning bylaws because it's ultimately the Zoning Board of Appeals that has authority to interpret it. But yes, it was Attorney Huxham's opinion, his opinion as Town Council, as to what the interpretation was. We've always maintained that he was mistaken and ultimately on remand, well, actually during the original appeal and then on remand, the Zoning Board of Appeals reached a different conclusion and I guess did not take Attorney Huxham's advice, which is perfectly appropriate and does happen.
Okay, so we have one for, one against, and the presiding judge over the current case in litigation has abstained from making a decision. So it seems like there's two disagreeing opinions.
There's a, the only decisions, the only decisions are the decisions of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Mr. Andrews' appeal. You have an opinion of Town Council, prior Town Council.
Right, right, opinion. If I said decision, I misspoke.
I think you have a different opinion from current land use counsel. I have my opinion, which is consistent, obviously, with current land use counsel. So you have any number of lawyers giving their opinions, but ultimately, the only decision that has been rendered is the decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals to adopt the Building Commissioner's interpretation, which is consistent with Ms. Wessel and with me, but not Mr. Huxham.
If I may clarify, my opinion is that this board does not have the authority to waive 7D. That's my opinion. My opinion is the only board that has the authority to waive 7D A is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Which is the requirement to put each building on its own lot.
However you want to interpret 7D A, that interpretation and that if it needs a waiver, if it needs a variance, if it doesn't, is up to the ZBA, is what my opinion is.
So I'm still trying to understand what specifically we're being asked to interpret on the zoning, because it sounds like the definition of what a lot is.
So I'm not asking you actually to interpret, you to interpret it. And again, I'm thankful the Town Council who was able to articulate this better than I. The Zoning Board of Appeals has already interpreted 176 7D 2 to not require the subdivision of the property to locate each building a lot. So that is the interpretation that's standing in the town. I'm asking you to essentially enforce that interpretation and simply approve a modified site plan approval that shows the plan without the lot lines, consistent with the Building Commissioner and the ZBA's interpretation. So I probably should not have used the word "ask you to interpret."
Okay.
I'm simply asking you to enforce the ZBA's interpretation and endorse the plan, which is consistent with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
If I may, Steve, on behalf of Jim Kramer, I'm counsel for Gordon Andrews. First of all, throw on the statements on the part of Mr. Brodsky. The court did enter an order with respect to the building permits. The court vacated the building permits and ordered the matter remanded to the ZBA to revoke the building permits. For whatever reason, the judge did not weigh in on the central issue, which is the interpretation of 7D 2A. However, it is completely clear that ad hoc decision-making by boards is by definition arbitrary and capacious. That means you can't go this way in this case, and this way in this case, and this way because you like that guy, and this way because you don't like that guy. There has to be a consistent interpretation. Now, all through 2014, 2015, and 2016, with some confusion in some places, there was a consistent interpretation of the zoning bylaw that gave full weight to the provision that states it is required that any multifamily development complex proposed hereunder shall locate each building on an individual lot which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way. When Amanda's Estates first came in front of you, it was all on the one 12-acre lot. There were no lot lines. This board, based on a memo authored, which I've provided to you in my materials by your town administrator, Mr. Selig, after consultation with land use counsel, opined to you that you needed to reject that and one other one, Halifax Trail. So it was also pending because there were not individual lots as was required. That was a consistent interpretation. So at the next meeting, this board informed the agents and principals of Amanda's Estates that lot lines, they needed to locate each building on an individual lot. Nobody suggested that locate, nobody suggested that locate meant just show that it conformed to the acreage. In fact, your Town Council stated that the definition of multifamily development, which is a development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land, seems to be contrary to 7D 2A, but it's not. If you read it in the common sense manner that it was always interpreted, which is when you start out, you have to have over 10 acres. Now, it has to be in the control of one person. In this case, there were actually three lots, but they configured them to be one lot. But then, once you have control of a 10-plus acre parcel, you can build one building per acre, but each has to be located on an individual lot. Now, this whole condo thing is just a total red herring. The judge rejected it. He was a developer's counsel before he was a judge. All you have to do is you deed out the units only. All of the land in each of the lots gets deeded into the condominium association and held as common. So it's completely untrue. And in fact, I believe there's a development in Halifax who has done it this way, a multifamily development, who has done it this way. So there may be, you know, financial advantages to not doing it this way, but it's not true that you can't do it this way, and it's not true that that was ever discussed before this board. This board said to them, "You need to have each one located on an individual lot." Their engineer said, "Oh my gosh, I'm so embarrassed, I can't believe I missed that. I can't believe I missed that. This is our first time doing a multifamily development in Halifax. We will go back and revise the plans and..." That's what they did. They went back and revised the plans and to have the lot lines on. Now, I would speculate that if we had almost any other judge in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, he would have looked at this and said, because the law is that a developer is bound by the plans that it submits, and plans that are incorporated within a site plan approval or a special permit have to be complied with. Now, his engineer, his agent named these lots. They put lot lines on these. Lot is a time term under your zoning bylaw. Lot means something. It doesn't mean, "Oh, thingy, to show we have enough space." It means lot, a lot is a lot. So when you say, "This is the approved plan and it has lots A through, 1 through 4 with parcel G, which was unbuildable," that means you have to create lots. I don't think there's any other judge that would have not just said, "On summary judgment, this is what you represented you were going to do in both your site plan approval and your special permit. Now this is what you have to do." Okay, so the judge found, based on the testimony of the principals and agents of the party trust, was what they said in court. Well, yeah, we knew that that's what the Planning Board required, but we thought we could get the ZBA to call it different. For whatever reason, they went up front of the ZBA submitting the same plans, never said, "Well, we know that this shows lot lines, but we want to make sure you understand that it's in the record." They weren't just locating them there for pretend. And locate doesn't really mean locate. Locate means just pretend that there's lot lines on there for now, but then we're not going to do anything about that. So site plan approval and special permit in hands, they then have, their engineer revised the plans, take the solid lines out, made dotted lines, change the word lot into the word phase, go and record those plans, and we believe that that's what they submitted in order to get their building permits. Now, I know that, I have written ad nauseam on this, there are a lot of reasons that the longstanding interpretation of the zoning bylaw, you know, are not favored by some people. I think that this interpretation, Mr. Brodsky's interpretation, that was also completely inconsistent would be estate lot interpretation of provisions of your zoning bylaw. Because pork chop lots, which are lots shaped like a pork chop that have a narrow access point of frontage and then a lot of backland, are estate lots under your zoning bylaw. And if you meet certain requirements, then you can build up to one house on those. Ignoring 167 7D 2A, just pretending it doesn't exist and it doesn't mean anything, would mean that estate lot, which had always been estate lots under your zoning bylaw, now could be developable as multifamily developments. So if you, as a town in Halifax, would like to make that change to your zoning bylaw, you absolutely have the right to do so. But what you don't have the right to do is just change the longstanding interpretation, consistent interpretation of your zoning bylaw, because now people find it inconvenient or find that they could make money if this interpretation was changed or rejected. So your board was clear and the judge found you required subdivision of the property. Your attorney is completely correct. This decision is not a model of clarity. It has internal inconsistencies. What Mr. Brodsky failed to mention is that the judge bifurcated the trial, meaning split it into two parts. The first part was only about whether the site plan approval required subdivision and whether the special permit required subdivision. He found that they both did. The second part of the trial is Mr. Andrews' claims of bad faith on the part of the town because he has been treated absolutely atrociously. I have worked in government my entire career since I graduated from law school in 1995. I have never, and I've been Town Council for Towne Giraffin since 2007. I cannot believe the way that this man has been treated by this town. It is criminal. And I have talked to Larry Mayo and discussed with him that there's, at this point, in my view, there's liability for constitutional civil rights violations against Mr. Gordon.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but that's not relevant.
So anyway, so there is a way to consistently interpret the zoning bylaw and it's the way that it was done by this board. And what the party trust is doing here is gaslighting and it's just incorrect and it's unfair and it's wrong. And, you know, obviously, this court still has retained jurisdiction. Every decision that this judge has made is ripe for appeal, but we're going back for the second part of the trial probably soon. And, you know, your board will be involved in that litigation as well at that point, I guess. But anyway, that's my, that's why I had submitted lots of written materials and that's all.
Okay. Thank you for your time. And can I, before you go, can I ask a relatively simple question?
Sure, of course.
Have you thought about going in front of the zoning board and asking them for relief? Because it seems like there's been opinions that that would be a much more straightforward and clear path.
So the problem based upon the judge's decision is with the site plan approval. It's the site plan approval and the plan attached to it that shows the lot lines. As I mentioned, the special permit doesn't speak to that, but the judge found that because the special permit incorporates the site plan approval, that we thought the place to fix it is where the problem lies. We don't need, based upon the ZBA's interpretation of the bylaw, we don't need a variance because they agree with our interpretation. It doesn't require that. So we did think there was a good reason to go to the ZBA to request a variance of a bylaw which they interpret in a consistent fashion. So just three things quickly. The judge has stayed his order vacating the building permits, so let me go through this process. I was entirely accurate that, you know, we're not required to do anything at the present other than the judge is giving us an opportunity to come and try and fix the permit.
And what that means is you just basically don't have to demolish it? You're allowed to let the buildings remain until this is resolved?
Yes, yes. Second, it's something to admit that there was a long-established interpretation of the bylaw. I believe that in 2014, there were two other multifamily developments that actually were approved without the lot lines. And then you get into the whole Halifax Trail thing, which was in 2016, though town was feeling its way through the multifamily development bylaw itself and it was entirely confusing through that entire timeframe. So we respectfully suggest that there's been no longstanding consistent interpretation other than Town Council's interpretation, which again, hasn't been adopted by the current Zoning Board of Appeals. The whole suggestion of the switching of the plans and the dotted lines, there are any number of types of plans that you create for purposes of building and development. And so we have phase plans that were done for construction purposes and for the condominium, creation of the condominiums. And so what those phase plans are unrelated to zoning, those are related to actually how you finance the construction and whatnot. There are plans that you do for purposes of title pot. So none of those plans are relevant. The only real plan that's at issue here is the site plan. I can't speak to Mr. Andrews' claims against the town. I don't think the town has any liability whatsoever. He's the appellant here, it's not like the town sued him, he sued the town. But that's not my hunt and, you know, I can't speak to that. I don't know what the term gaslighting means in this context. We are, you know, we're a developer, we've got our permits, we built our project in compliance with our permits, and in the middle of that, in the middle, we have this issue now. And all we're looking to do is to complete the project that we started 2014, now some five years ago.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
I just have two quick things to clarify. I'm not sure how, I don't think estate lots have anything to do with this. Estate lots are when you have reduced frontage. So if you have, you need to have 50 feet of frontage, whereas with multifamily development, if you look at the definition of a multifamily development, you still need to have 150 feet of frontage.
And they don't.
I'm just clarifying.
They don't, they have 74.
And the other thing that I just wanted to point out, this board is not a defendant in the Land Court suit right now. So I really, my firm represents over 200 cities and towns in Massachusetts and the advice that I always give to boards is that you need to interpret things the way that you think that you need to interpret it. You can't concentrate on extraneous information or anything like that or, I don't, I think I heard Mr. Andrews' attorney wrong, but I thought she said that the Planning Board could be brought into the lawsuit. And if that is the case...
I did hear that as well.
Okay, that shouldn't have been said in this setting. You are not a part of this lawsuit. You are here for one, just one, I don't want to say simple, but one, because it's clearly... You are here for one, just one, I don't want to say simple, but one, because it's clearly not. You are here for one issue. You have an application in front of you. And I suggest you just act on that application and not listen to threats of litigation or anything.
I wasn't trying to threaten anybody.
I certainly took that as a threat. So, I'm glad that you clarified that because I wasn't sure.
I completely agree with everything she said.
Okay. So, to the point of if we were to decide that lot lines weren't required based on following the zoning board's interpretation, how would you respond to the requirement for the frontage for the parcel to make it a buildable lot in the first place?
So, there is no requirement of frontage because I mentioned in summary judgment that the judge found that the requirements of 167-12 control this project, not 167-10. 167-10 are your general requirements and that's where you find the frontage requirements. If you look at 167-12, there is no frontage requirement for a multi-development complex. And so, that's entirely consistent with the judge finding, legal finding on that issue in summary judgment.
Mr. Piccarelli?
Just to chime in, the starter's requirement of frontage. I would agree with that in theory what you're saying, but I think with the special permit process, the requirement of frontage would be safety. It's the intent of the subdivision. What is the intent of a subdivision? It's for ingress and egress, it's for access, it's for the safety of the people in the area. So, if we're looking at it that way, that's the only time I add to that. If the board wants to hear any of my interpretations, they're more than willing to ask me, I'm not going to push it on you. I can tell you why I interpreted it the way that I did. I can tell you what I, the interpretation I gave to the zoning board in 2017, which upheld my decision. That's up to the board if they want to hear it.
Do you, do you make a determination at that time that it didn't require the frontage?
Yes, during that meeting, I discussed it, I made a determination, I tried to explain it. The board upheld my decision.
And to clarify on the road and talking about how there are other requirements and other people are going to be looking at that. As a planning board, when we were talking about the entrance, I think we were able to show that they were actually able to provide the same entrance that you would actually have on any other subdivision as far as your apron. I think the only actual difference was whether or not the rounding was further into the layout for Elm Street. But as far as the safety, they're providing the same entrance as would be found anywhere else in town.
And this was run by the fire department. They took wheelbase measurements on it, the largest vehicle, the fire department approved it, the police department approved it.
These things were taken into consideration.
These were taken into consideration. And I'm just trying to clarify here that this is not a simple process. A multifamily development is not easier than a single family. You need 10 acres to start, just to start. So, to say any estate lot is going to be a multifamily development is incorrect. You've got to start with 10 acres. You have to be one unit per acre, which is more restrictive than 40,000 square foot for single to family residential units. It requires a special permit through the ZBA, which opens it to public forum and discussion from the butters. It's also appealable. Requires site plan review. It goes through the planning board. It's more stringent oversight from the board to help on the 80% total parcel per. It must meet the safety requirements of both police chief, fire chief, access, ingress and egress, available for all safety equipment and vehicle access. It must meet the density regulations for specific use on a 167-12, which is more restrictive than a single family to dwell in. Requires individual building permits for every separate structure. They're also appealable. The site plan's appealable. So, to say that it's an easier process is incorrect.
I don't think anybody's made that assertion. I think everybody would agree that these type of developments certainly warrant more attention than somebody building a single family house. I appreciate your interpretation, but from what I heard, our legal counsel has a differing interpretation of the requirement for the frontage. So, I think we find ourselves again in a position where it's not clear and there's people on both sides of the argument.
Well, again, requirements for what?
Frontage.
For 40,000 square foot lot for a multifamily development. You can ask counsel what that statement was.
And I think she answered earlier, but...
It was for the 40,000 square foot lot. So, Mr. Attorney Brodsky is correct that the judge did hold that Section 12 does not apply, but Section 10 does apply. But quite honestly, if I may...
Right, the single family...
Oh, it's the opposite, I'm sorry.
12 of the specific requirements, 10 of the general.
Sure, yeah.
Sorry. But if I may, again, none of this is for the planning board. This is all for the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals, if a multifamily development comes in, the zoning board of appeals has to issue a special permit. That special permit is issued pursuant to the bylaw. It then has to come to site plan for the planning board pursuant to Section 28. So, you guys are looking at Section 28. So, again, I'm not really sure what you're being asked. If you're being asked to waive 7 to A, you can't. That is my opinion. You cannot waive that. Only the zoning board of appeals can waive that.
Yeah.
But what he's, apparently, the second thing he's asking is for you to modify an approved site plan by removing lot lines, I think.
All right, so I'd like to speak on that.
Go ahead.
As far as the trails go and the, just the multifamily in general, when, these are the first two that we came up with and we were definitely trying to feel our way through this. So, as far as those lines, it was confusing from the beginning for each project and we weren't sure. As far as the definition of lot, it is described twice. There is one definition of lot that is only described as a parcel of land that is shown on a plan. That is part of the reason I was willing to ask the party trust to add the lot lines because in that interpretation, using that definition, they did not have to meet every requirement, they just needed to be on the plan to show. I asked if it was for legal description when it was for the trails because I wasn't sure why they needed those. I didn't think they did. I think they need one large piece of property. The trails are the only thing that we can compare to, the trails are the only thing that we can say that we've done in the past. In the past, we have accepted a modified plan that removed the lot lines because it clarified the situation. That is what we have done in the past. So, I think that's the only thing that we could look back to compare it to.
And I appreciate that we've done things in the past and I wasn't on the board at that time and Mr. Tree wasn't on the board at the time.
That's why I wanted to let you know that, like, this is all new. This isn't...
Isn't that what she just said we couldn't do?
And I think that's currently where we find ourselves in a position, we've done things in the past and we're getting different opinions now.
But I was saying, only once and it was when we were feeling it out.
Sure.
So, we don't have this long history of doing anything about these.
Right, and I think that point's been made that there is no track record saying this is how we do it as a town. Yes.
So, again, I also did give my interpretation of 167-7D2A. So, I think we're all agree, it's very confusing.
And what is that subsection again? Would you mind just reading it for everybody?
It is required that any multifamily development complex proposed here under shall locate each building on an individual lot which will have continuous frontage on a public or private way. Now, if you'd like, I can break it down into the interpretation I gave the zoning board.
Please, yeah.
So, very confusing. You've got a lot of words going around, a lot of interpretations. So, do we want to take the confusing route or the easy route? That's what I need to look at when I look at these bylaws. It is required that any multifamily development complex... Okay, let's break it down. What's a complex? A complex to me is similar buildings on a single lot. Now, again, you take it however you want to take it. This is my opinion, my interpretation. Proposed here under shall locate, find by survey, each building. Each is plural, signifies more than one. On an individual lot. Well, it comes down to what do you want to define individual as? It's used as an adjective. And as an adjective, individual can mean single and separate. Okay? So, an individual person can be a single person or can be a separate person from a group. So, how do we take that in the context of the way it's delivered? So, in order for me to take that, I go back to the basics and what's the definition of a multifamily development? It's three or more units, three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land under one ownership or not less than 10 acres. A single lot of land. Remember, individual depends on how you want to take it, as single or separate. Under one ownership, we have, we have a definition of one ownership, an undivided ownership by one person or by several persons, whether the nature is joint, in common, or by entirety. We have a definition of a condominium. A form of ownership or a development so characterized in which an individual owns several, one or more single dwelling units, is commercial spaces or in a multi-unit building or complex. The owners of the individual units have an undivided interest in the common areas and facilities that serve the project. The common areas include such items as land, roof, floors, main walls, stairwells, lobby, hall parking space, community, commercial facilities. So, what I'm telling you is 167-7D2A can be interpreted as a single lot of land if you look at the definition of multifamily development.
But it does indicate that each building needs to be contained on an individual lot.
How do you want to interpret individual? As single or separate?
I don't understand the distinction between single versus separate.
I'm just giving you the definition of individual. That's all I'm giving you. As an adjective, individual is defined as single or separate.
Okay.
So, I'm saying...
If I, if I could, I also want to tell you I have in my hand Mr. Piccarelli's attorney's submission regarding his property when he was trying to seek relief from the ZBA, in which his attorney says that 167-D2A provides that any multifamily development complex shall locate each building on an individual lot. Mr. Piccarelli needs a variance of this section since both of his buildings are on one lot. So, again, this is an interpretation that will benefit him and his special permit that needs to be periodically renewed because removing that requirement and pretending it doesn't mean what it obviously says would mean that he doesn't have to subdivide that lot, which he can't do.
Okay.
On pre-existing non-conforming plans, is that what you're saying? So, it wasn't a similar project?
No, it just, but if that bylaw provision is applicable, then they have to be located on...
So, again, how was that feeling?
No, and this is very confusing. I think, I think the first determination we got from our legal counsel was that we don't have the authority to waive the requirement of the houses being on lots. Am I correct in that statement?
Yes.
You don't have, you don't have the authority to interpret or waive 7D.
And 7D is...
7D2A, that's the provision that Mr. Piccarelli was referring to.
Yep.
I think that we have the ability to determine laws and interpret them as a plan.
Uh, no, that's the zoning board's interpretation. We're basically ensuring that the plans comply with the requirements in here in terms of the information that they show on the plans and the design of the proposed project aligns with our intent. There's a number of criteria in the site plan review that you have to adhere to. So, 72 is that it indicates that any multifamily development complex proposed here under shall locate each building on an individual lot which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way. So, our understanding is that we are not allowed to waive that requirement or interpret it.
Whatever it is, whatever that requirement is.
Whatever that requirement is.
You're not allowed to vary it, you're not allowed to waive it. Quite frankly, because it's so confusing, if I were you, I wouldn't even try and interpret it because you don't have to.
Okay.
Quite frankly, that is for the zoning board of appeals to do.
And so, again, if the board takes counsel's advice, we presented an alternative, which is to adopt the building commissioner and the ZBA's interpretation of that confusing provision. Their interpretation is that we don't have to show, subdivide the property to locate each building on a separate subdivision lot. So, you can simply apply that interpretation to bylaw, endorse the revised plan that takes the lots off of it.
But I'm having a little trouble understanding exactly what we're being asked to do other than just sign a plan to sign a plan.
That's all we're doing. We're asking you to modify the site plan approval plan that was issued in 2014 to take the lines off the plan consistent with what the ZBA and the building commissioners say that means. That's all we're asking the board to do.
But the plan approved by the zoning board does have lot lines shown, correct?
No, no.
Yes, it does.
No, it's the same plan. So, it's the same...
But then you have two different plans that are...
There aren't two different plans. The same site plan approval plan that you endorsed was presented to the zoning board of appeals and incorporated into their special permit. There isn't a separate plan. So, that's, those are the plan of record for this development are the site plan approvals that you have actually...
But that plan does show lot lines.
Yes, that's the problem. That is the problem that we're trying to fix. That's right. As Mr. Millie said, the planning board directed Mr. Webby to put lines on the plan. So, we're asking you to modify that plan, the plan set, to take the lines off.
Well, we wouldn't be modifying it, obviously. You would be modifying it, resubmitting a new set of plans.
We have it right here. Everything's all done. We have the bylaws, we have all the plans. It's the same plan that we submitted to you. We simply deleted the reference to the waiver. So, we're asking you to sign that plan, which takes, which modifies your 2014 site plan approval decision.
Correct.
And takes the lines off the plan.
But again, the plan approved by the zoning board does show lot lines, correct?
No, there's, it's the same, it's the same plan set. We took the same plan set. So, we had to go to you first.
No, but the one that we approved has lot lines currently on it, correct?
It's the same, same plan set. So, we, we had to come, so, we go to ZBA first, we were directed to go to you first.
Right.
So, we took your site plan approval plan and we presented those to ZBA.
Yes.
Same, because that plan set...
To clarify, the plans that we approved show lot lines.
Yes, sir.
The plans zoning board approved shows lot lines.
Correct.
The plans you're asking us to now sign do not show lot lines.
Correct.
But the zoning board approved plans will still continue to show lot lines.
No, because they incorporated your plan set.
So, you're saying by us approving it, they will automatically adopt any...
Any modification?
Okay.
Yes, so, ultimately, and I'll consult with the zoning board of appeals, if the zoning board of appeals wants us to show them another plan set without lot lines, we're happy to do it. But as I said, what they did is they issued, they issued their special permit and the special permit references the site plans. It's the same set of site plans that you folks have, the site plan approval plan.
But this would have a new set of plans to the new date, right?
So, if, if, if this, if, I have to, I don't have a copy of the special permit.
You're saying that their thing only says it references the endorsed planning board's plan? So, if that changes, it doesn't matter, their permit will always reflect our modified...
That's my, but if the town tells me to go to the zoning board and get the zoning board to amend the special permit to adopt your plan set, I'm more than happy to do that. Whatever the town wants us to do, we're not, we're not averse to going to the, to the zoning board to ask them to essentially adopt your plan set. I don't think that the four corners of the special permit necessarily require that, but if we're, if we need to do that, we're happy to do that.
And I think that is ultimately the same path that our counsel was referring to in that you would get relief from having, from the zoning board, from having, whether or not you call it relief or variance, however you cross the legal threshold of getting the approval done, you would ask for them to approve a plan that does not have lot lines on it. And then, we would then also be asked to endorse a site plan and grant the special permit or reissue or update the plans to reflect a plan that does not have lot lines on it as well.
So, we wouldn't be asking for the zoning board to grant that relief. I guess the only thing we would ask them to do is to, I guess if they wanted to, to modify the special permit simply to reflect the revised plan set, I don't know, we're not asking for any relief.
Because you don't believe it's required.
I don't have a copy of the special permit. I have many of these documents ingrained in my, in my, in my brain that, you know, the trial liners, this, this...
Yep.
I can't tell you in complete candor that there's a, there's a reference in the special permit to a particular plan set with the dates in them. So, you have the site plan approval.
I do, yep.
So, I don't have a copy of the special permit.
Okay. But the special permit also gets issued by the planning board, does it not for this one? Zoning board issues a special permit?
The zoning board...
The zoning board... The zoning board of appeals is the special permit granting authority for multifamily development.
For these ones as well, okay.
So, we went to you for site plan approval, then we went to ZBA for special permit.
Essentially, okay. And I saw our legal counsel...
So, I think that what they did, I think the problem is they did it backwards. They should have gone to the zoning board of appeals for their special permit. They should have then come to the planning board for a site plan. Because any relief granted by a special permit would then make the, make the proposal more final. Because, for example, you don't come to the planning board to get...
Because, for example, you don't come to the planning board to get site plan approval if you need a variance because you don't know if you're going to get the variance. So you want to get all of your relief before you go and get site plan. Site plan approval is not relief. Site plan approval is an approval. Relief is given by the zoning board of appeals. So if the special permit references a plan that has lines on it, by you removing the lines, it doesn't necessarily help them because they have to go back to the zoning board of appeals. And that's what the judge directed them to do, actually, was to go back to the ZBA.
Okay.
Not exactly.
I don't interpret the decision as that either because, quite frankly, I've had a discussion with the chairman of the planning board regarding what comes first, variance, the special permit or the site plan. So I was actually hoping that the judge would weigh in as to what came first, and he didn't. But I'm of the opinion that they should go to ZBA first. However, in this instance, it doesn't matter. They still have to go to ZBA.
Okay, and I would tend to agree with that, that if there was a plan that the zoning board were to approve through special permit or otherwise, whether or not a variance was specifically requested, if it's determined that a variance isn't required as part of the zoning process, either explicitly granted or included in the site special permit, I think at that point, if there's a plan that's been approved there, and we're reviewing the design of the subdivision tomorrow's point to ensure that it's safe and ensure that the access is done properly, that seems like a much more logical approach.
So Mr. Chairman, I also, I do also have another procedural issue is that the site plan approval was never appealed because Mr. Andrews sought enforcement from the building inspector. That was denied, and it goes to the ZBA. ZBA has no jurisdiction over site plan approval. So the site plan approval has not been appealed.
Okay.
And so we're not necessarily in a remand situation when it comes to site plan approval. And I read your zoning bylaw. I don't see anywhere in your zoning bylaw that you're allowed to modify site plan approval.
So are you saying this would have to be a new site plan submission as a matter of procedure?
Unless, I haven't looked at the planning board rules and regulations, but I really think it has to be a new site plan. I don't see any kind of provision for modification, minor or major modification, in the bylaw.
Because it's already been approved and it's been such a long time since it has been approved.
Be a modification, and I don't see a provision for modifications.
Okay.
So that's a new issue. I mean, we routinely modify site plan approvals, and so, but I can't speak to the practice here in Halifax.
Okay.
But again, perhaps you could educate me as to what you've done in the past, but it's not.
I cannot, no.
It's not, because again, the application.
It makes sense because then zoning board would, depending on what the modification was, we could say it's insignificant, but the zoning board would probably want to look at it again to see what changes we proposed.
If it was a substantial change.
Yeah, if it was, you know.
Right.
I'd feel the same way if it was, if I was the second one.
I should say, I mean, this has been treated as it's an application, so it meets all of the public notice requirements. So there's no issue there of people not having notification regarding the submission of the modification.
Okay.
But I'm happy to look into the issue further, but it's something that in my, at least in my practice, we do routinely.
Okay, Mr. Piccarelli?
Just to weigh in, again, my opinion, and I agree, it's a substantial change. So you have to. My interpretation is, what's a substantial change? So if the board in there wisdom decides it's not applicable, is that a substantial change?
What not being applicable?
That they've met the requirements of 167-7-2DA.
But I think unfortunately, a plan would have to be resubmitted, and we'd have to re-sign a new plan that wouldn't have the lot lines on it, should that go through the zoning board process. So whether or not it's substantial.
I'm not saying whether it should, sure, sure, it shouldn't go through the zoning. All I'm saying is, do you have the authority tonight to sign a new plan or don't you? That's all I'm asking. And typically, on a modification, my interpretation on a site plan review, on an endorsement is, yes, if it's a substantial change, it shouldn't be modified. But if something doesn't apply, is that a substantial change?
I think the problem is, we would have to sign a new plan, whether or not it does or does not apply, because a new plan would not include the lot lines.
It's the same, yes, it's the same.
Same design, same, no lot lines, right? Right. No, I think we do.
It's not that I foresee a problem with you guys going through zoning board of appeals. It just seems like that's like the proper procedure.
So I just want to be clear that.
The design is not, yeah.
Party trust was told explicitly to go to planning board before zoning for this project. And some of that may have to do with the fact that this was one of the first projects to come through. I agree that it's not how it's typically done, but that's how it was done here. So that's why the logic is to come through you in order to request modification of the plan. So I personally, again, I've not seen a planning board say that, no, we can't modify an existing site plan. But again, I'm not town council. I'm obviously advocating for the party trust. Planning boards do this all the time. As I said, planning boards waive site plan approval in certain instances, so.
Yeah, I certainly understand that. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to make any statements? Okay. Any other discussion here?
I think now I'm stuck with the idea of whether or not it's a new plan or if they have to resubmit, if it's just a, if it's, to me, it seems like it is just a modification.
Okay.
I see here that they.
Can you just speak into the microphone for everybody?
I see here that the planning board on September 22nd, 2014, wrote a letter, and it said specifically that they needed special permits for multifamily development are allowed by special permit from the zoning board of appeals in the ARB and C districts. Variances to any requirements are sought through the zoning board of appeals along with a special permit for multifamily developments as set out in the zoning chapter 167-7-D2. Please be advised that all variances and special permits shall comply with all the rules and regulations and codes of the town of Halifax.
Essentially standard permit language.
Sure.
But it still states it and.
Yes, we did that.
No, we, we appreciate it. It's very confusing, and you're getting conflicting direction from the internal departments, and it doesn't make it very easy for anybody to get through the process.
I can just say one more thing I forgot to say. They represented to this board that they would seek frontage variances for two of the lots from the ZBA, which may be why that language was included. And if you notice, who is the signator of the site plan approval is Mr. Piccarelli, who was on this board at the time, but is now offering a completely different interpretation than the one. And the reason Mr. Andrews didn't appeal the site plan approval or the special permit is because he was aware that they had previously tried to subdivide. They had gone with a definitive subdivision plan, and that had failed. And part of the reason it failed was they couldn't get the frontage variances for the two lots that were too small. So there's a lot of baiting and switching.
I love all the stipulations on that.
I also would like to say that in the minutes from the Halifax planning board meeting on September 18th, 2014, there was a continuation of the site plan review of manor estates for the multifamily development. And Joe Webby, Joe, excuse me, Joe Webby from Webby Engineering was there, and he specifically asked the board. He said, "The board asked me last time to make sure that every building, six buildings, each be put on its own 40,000 square foot minimum lot. So then we can go and say this has already been approved and reviewed in what we call a parcel that is going to contain a driveway and then have these duplexes on their own individual lots." I have eight sets for you here. It also states further down that Mr. Webby said, "I think the only variance we are going to need is what they call the 150-foot frontage. They are 100 feet from the back line. The buildings are 100 feet away from each other." Mr. Piccarelli, Joe, did we have this on, have a review on this? Secretary Merrill has reviewed this over and over with the subdivision plan. I think they made the tangent smaller. Mr. Webby, we didn't touch the infrastructure because it had already previously reviewed and approved. We didn't touch that at all. Any questions from the board was asked by Mr. Piccarelli, and Mr. Millia said, "No, I think we all, I think all we did is advise just to draw on the lots. There were no specifications on the lot requirements themselves, even the frontage. I don't think that was an issue. Just wanted to see the square footage lots were just as drawn. We're not supposed to even bother with the variances."
So that's correct. There was a discussion, but the need for a variance was determined that you did need a variance because there's no frontage requirement.
That's not what that says.
Exactly.
That's what I said.
That's exactly what was said. That's a piece of a larger conversation over many evenings. But ultimately, it was determined that there was no need for a frontage variance. And as I said, Judge Bay had determined that the specific requirements of 167-12 control this case, and that confirms that.
And because it's silent on a frontage requirement, the implication is that there is no frontage requirement.
But it does say that a manor estate is basically doing a multifamily development. Everything pretty much seems to be in order, other than getting the individual buildings on separate lots, which is a requirement.
Mr. Chairman.
If you, are you done?
Sure.
In the petition originally for Halifax Trails, they requested variances for the separate lots.
From the zoning board?
Yes. They requested variances for 150 feet of frontage for lots. So it was determined at that point in time, 2014, 2015, that each building had to be on a separate lot, and the lot was required to have 150 feet of frontage.
And when it was re-permitted in 2016, it was determined that they did not need those frontages. That is the frontage. And so they did not get variances when they re-permitted Halifax Trails in 2016.
And that was the Piccarelli's reinterpretation of that, if you look at the meter minutes.
So they did not need frontage or did not need lots at that time on the second?
They did not, I'm sorry, they did not need the frontage, and the board waived the requirement, this board, this board waived the requirement of 176-D2.
But we didn't have the right.
Well, I can't.
Yep, that's what happened, regardless of whether it's right or wrong.
Our logic was, you did it in the past, so that's why we asked you in the first instance. Again, I'm not arguing with town council regarding her interlocution for trying that. I think I may push back a little bit on the modification issue.
Okay.
Because again, I don't know what would be gained by requiring us to file another application for site plan review so we can do this again in 21 days.
And I think if it's been filed and it's in accordance with the proper filing requirements for a new site plan review, I don't know that there'd be much of an issue. I think we would want to just confirm that. But I guess the question I would pose back to you and your team is if we, if you granted a continuance on the project, would you then pursue with zoning board a modification to the previous site plan or special permit to essentially grant approval of a plan that does not show lot lines? So the zoning board can officially approve a plan with an interpretation from the building inspector, whether it does or does not include variances?
So we have, it gets even more complicated.
Right.
Because the judge has us on a short leash and has stayed our order. I need to report back to the judge on Friday.
Okay.
The judge was expecting last week a decision, and because of the conflict issue, we were unable to reach a decision. You're also bumping up against your 45-day period, which is a requirement.
Unless you grant a continuation.
Right, but I'm afraid of doing anything to violate the judge's order to do something. I mean, I think there are two separate processes, which is that I think the planning board has been asked to sign a plan that modifies your 2014 site plan approval plan. If we need, if we need to go to zoning, we will go to zoning, because otherwise, I'm not going to be able to move this forward.
Right.
So, you know, my preference is to not go back to the judge tomorrow and say, oh, the planning board requested a continuance so that we can go talk to the zoning board to have them approve the same plan. The preference would be that the planning board, the planning board endorsed the plan with the direction to, if we need to go to zoning board, that you'll need to go to zoning board. Again, there are two issues in the case. Does the site plan approval require a subdivision of the special permit required of subdivision? The judge basically said, as I mentioned before, that the special permit in and of itself doesn't require a subdivision, but incorporates the site plan review. So the first step in the process was always, in my mind, to come to the planning board to ask for the plan change.
Right.
And then I got to figure out, what does that mean with respect to the special permit? If we have to go to the ZBA and ask them to modify their special permit to reflect the revised plan, I'll certainly do that. I can't circumvent the zoning board because I'm not only answering to you, and I'm answering to the zoning board, I'm actually answering to Judge Bay in the land court.
Okay.
So in the judgment, I think this is the judgment right here, yep. It says that it does reiterate that the planning board lacks the authority to waive a substantive requirement of the zoning bylaw. The zoning act contains no reference to site plan review. It is entirely a creature defined by each local zoning bylaw or ordinance. Thus, the Halifax planning board has only the authority that the Halifax zoning bylaw bestows upon it in site plan review proceedings. In Halifax, site plan review is defined by ZBL 167-28, which is what we've been chatting about tonight. The trust does not bother to cite any provision of that section that provides the planning board with the authority to waive the ZBL's clear requirement that each building in a multifamily development be located on an individual lot. Rather, the trust states only that on March 7th, 2016, the planning board granted the identical waiver. Did you go in front of the ZBL and ask for a waiver of the lot lines before you built?
That's not what that says, by the way, but the answer is, no, we came to the planning board to request the waiver pursuant to the Halifax Trail, trust me.
Correct. And I think the determination currently that we have in front of us is that we don't have the authority to grant those waivers.
That's why we're not, I'm not here.
So the first option is off the table. We're talking about the second option now, which is no lot lines.
They did go to the planning board, to the ZBA, asking for a waiver of this provision. This was in, in 2016.
There were a variety of different projects that were proposed with different people coming in. People wanted to change things in the project. That was submitted and by, submitted and withdrawn.
Can we just clarify for a second, one at a time? So are we talking about the current application and what was discussed as part of the current application?
They sought a waiver. We are also requesting a waiver of section 167-D2A.
For a different project, right?
No, no, that was this project.
Brookside Realty LLC, which is a different legal entity that was thinking about buying a piece of this. Mr. Johnson at that time was involved in Brookside.
What was the decision?
And so that request was withdrawn.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi, Ed Johnson. Yeah, what she was just talking about was Brookside Realty was going to become involved in the manor estate project, and they were going to purchase it from Mr. Merritt, who was the owner at the time. Body trusts. They went, came to the ZBA to ask about changing the building designs and asking them to waive 167-D2, I think it was. But it was pulled back with a.
Okay, so no action was taken on that?
No, it was, no, no. It's all.
Okay.
You know, we're here.
So there's no, yeah, there's no.
We're here this evening. We came to the planning board initially with this project, then went to the ZBA for the special permit. So we're following the same steps that we took before. You know, I've been, I've been in this business for almost 40 years. I've built multiple developments. I've never built a multifamily development, but I've built condos completely different from this. They were condo pieces of bling.
Sure.
I've never, in my almost 40 years of being in business, been. been involved in any kind of lawsuit pursuing or anything like this. We had, we came to the planning board. We followed the direction. We went to the ZBA. We followed the direction. We applied for building foods. We waited almost six months for the town to approve the condo. We've done everything in protocol that was asked of us until Mr. Andrews stepped down to appeal and sue the town. He didn't sue the party trust. He sued the town. Us owning this property had to become involved in the suit. Where we've put in the suit destruction, the underground. We've met all the requirements by the prior department, the police department, the water department. We proceeded to build buildings and have over $2 million invested. We have done nothing wrong. We've followed what we were told to do. We are asking for some, I don't know if the term relief is correct or not. We are asking the board to modify a plan that they approved before by removing the lines and make this a multifamily development, not a subdivision. If you have to put a building on individual lots, is that not a subdivision? It is a subdivision. A multifamily development is not a subdivision. It is just what it says, a multifamily development.
And I think everybody agrees with you that there's a lot of confusion in the way the zoning is written. It makes it very challenging to make it clear to somebody to develop a piece of property. And it was appealed. It went to court. Uh, we're back here because they determined that it wasn't done properly the first time. So we're trying to figure out a way to, to do it properly, not only for the town, but to cover you so that if you do get an approval, you're not going to find yourself back in this case again. So I don't think anybody wants that.
So in answer to your question, I think our preference would be to have the board to act on the request before it with the understanding that, that if we have to go to zoning, we have to go to zoning rather than requesting a continuance because I have to get permission from the judge to extend the stay that he granted us to allow us to do this. And I'm afraid of getting crosswise with the judge by agreeing to do something that he hadn't previously offered us.
So what specifically are you required to provide by Friday? Because it sounded like you needed to provide an update by Friday, not a, an approved plan.
No, what I need to do is provide a status report to report. And I need to provide, if we do need more time, a request for a continuation of the stay. But I, I would, again, we'll, we'll be guided by the, the board. I, I don't think there's, if, if your concern is that somehow we're going to circumvent the zoning board here, we, we can't do that because we're, we're under the supervision of the land court. We have to, you know, go back and, and if we need zoning board to also approve the plan change, we have to go to zoning board to do that. But I, I, again, our preference would be to have this board, you know, grant the relief tonight so I can tell the judge, judge, the planning board did this. And they've directed me to go to zoning and I'm going to consult the town council and find out what I need to do. And then I'm going to have to ask for additional time from the judge in order to go to zoning. I don't know if the judge is going to give me additional time. The judge can say, listen, you know, we, we gave you, I gave you sufficient time.
And I think before you start, I, I think the, you noted relief. You're asking for us to grant relief, but it doesn't sound to me like we're granting relief for anything other than we're relying on the zoning board to make the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. And then we would then be reviewing the site plan in the same way it was previously reviewed to make sure that it complies with the design requirements for what would be required for a development of this nature.
I think part of the problem is that the court did remand this to the ZBA with an order that it vacate the building permits. But for whatever reason, that order was issued on July 1st. For whatever reason, nobody has brought it back in front of the ZBA. And actually, the court said, when he asked for a motion to stay, the court said, well, I, I might not be able to grant your motion if you're seeking relief from a different board that's not in this case, um, which is the planning board.
So is the planning board involved in the case or the zoning board?
No, just the ZBA.
So don't you need to go to the zoning board?
So, so that, that's an open issue, but just to be clear, I provided you with a copy of the judge's stay order. We didn't do anything wrong. The town didn't do anything wrong. The zoning board didn't do anything wrong. The judge has granted us a stay of his judgment so that we can fix the problem. There's always, there's always a suggestion here that someone did something wrong. No one, no one did anything wrong.
I actually read this because I've been reading this to try and figure out what has happened.
I think that's my.
So, so that's a copy of the judgment. There's a 28, 30-page decision that elaborates on the judgment. So I respectfully suggest that if you really want to know what's going on, you have to read the full decision.
Do you have a copy of the stay? You said you provided, is that a more brief document?
The board had requested me to give you a copy of the judge's decision. You may remember, we, we found out that Mr. Andrews actually came back to you in August without us knowing. And, and you guys had a discussion regarding the decision. It's another whole issue.
So the decision, the stay is part of the decision, it's not separate?
No, no, so there are three things. And, and I, I should be careful here. I, I think I gave you a copy of the stay. I thought I sent you the decision, the summary judgment motion and the stay order. Uh, I can check my file. So you should have, at least for me, a copy of the judge's decision, a copy of the summary judgment decision. And I believe I sent you a copy of the stay order, but it is getting late, so.
There it is.
So the only point with respect to the stay is that the judge has stayed any action on the judgment to allow us to do this.
And the deadline on that is?
No one did anything wrong here.
No, and that's fine. Uh, we're not here to make judgment on who did right and who did what wrong. Uh, we're here to review the current application in front of us. So the, the question on the stay is, did they request you to go back to the zoning board specifically?
They remanded to the ZBA.
So the, the, the way it works is that the, the, the ZBA, the ZBA has authority. Well, you have the stay order right there.
Do we have, do we all have a copy of this?
I don't. I don't know if we all do. It's in the package. It was the back page, I think, that he sent us.
Okay, I'll just read it until the record just add it. Uh, the court has reviewed the party trust renewed motion for stay and Mr. Andrews' opposition to that motion. The court grants the motion in part and denies it in part. The court stays its July 1st, 2019 order through September 13th, 2019. That date has passed.
It was further extended, so I would give you.
Okay, so there's a subsequent one?
Yes.
Okay, so it was already extended once for about three months. Uh, the court orders at the party trust to file by September 11th, 2019 one, a report on the status of the Halifax Planning Board's public hearing on the trust request for modification of the trust site plan approval and B, any motion for the extension of this stay passed September 13th, 2019. I assume you filed both of those?
Yes. And the judge, that's right, and the judge has granted a further stay until Friday.
Okay. The court orders the party trust to send to the sessions clerk and all parties at the time of filing electronic courtesy copy of the trust report and any motion to extend the stay. Uh, with respect to the trust request that the court retain jurisdiction over this action to the extent that the motion asks the court to retain jurisdiction over the enforcement of its orders and the parties' conduct in this proceeding, that request is mooted. The court has not entered a final judgment in this action and thus it has jurisdiction over its orders and the parties to this dispute. To the extent the motion seeks, for example, an assertion of this court's jurisdiction over the planning board proceedings on the trust modification petition, the request is denied as the planning board is not a party to this proceeding. Can you explain that last little bit in layman's terms?
Yeah, no, so if, if we want to complain about your action to the judge in this case, we can't agree you're not a party, but we'd have to do something else.
Okay.
So, and, and we had no intention of complaining about this board's actions to Judge Vay.
But a request was made of some sort to that extent?
I, I don't know why the judge offered, there's been no suggestion that, that we would involve the planning board in a lawsuit involving the ZBA.
Okay. All right, so you got an extension once already and you prefer not to do it a second time?
Yes, I'm on skating on thin ice. I've got a land court judge who expects to be to deliver a decision. I've already asked for one extension because of an unusual circumstance. And again, I'll, I'll be guided by the board. If the planning board says, well, is our judgment that we're not going to act on this until you go talk to the zoning board? Um, I'll speak to my clients as to whether they're, they're willing to extend the 45-day period. I'm, I'm afraid of incurring the wrath of Judge Vay, who's going to say, well, you know, you know, why didn't you come and talk to me about that ahead of time?
And I think you would have a defensible position. I'm not a lawyer by any means, but this is a process. It's complicated and we're trying to work our way through that process.
Again, our, our, our preference would be for this board to act on, and I, I don't know what you want to call it, the request that you signed the plan. Uh, I guess if, if the, if the board's judgment is, is that they want more time to consider this and they want us to go talk to zoning, I'll talk to my clients and see what they want to do.
I mean, this is a, you have just been asked today to sign this plan. This is the first time. So this, this decision came out July 1st and it's September 25th. So a couple of weeks ago, he was in front of you telling you there's no problem. You could waive whatever you wanted and that's not an issue. Um, when, you know, clearly that's not the case. And any land use lawyer would understand that site plan is defined by your bylaw and it gives you no right to waive some provisions. And now he's saying, yeah, just, just sign this, just sign this, go ahead, it's no problem. Um, I think that the reason he's in this skating on thin ice is because it's late September and he hasn't, um, you know, a decision that came out July 1st. This is the first time he's asking you to, to do something. Um, I don't know if your town council was aware that he was going to ask this as a plan B. Um, but, you know, this is news to us, so.
So it's the exact same plan and we deleted the note that says?
I think we all know what's on it, right? The lot lines are gone and?
And I, I know that, that Ms. Kramer likes to portray me as a complete idiot here. Um, I thought it a reasonable path forward to request that you do something that you had done previously with another multifamily development project. I did not think that that was an unreasonable ask. With respect to timing, we've been completely timely regarding submitting our, our application and we've had some unusual circumstances beyond our control. Mr. Andrews is asking that Mr. Millia rescues himself as, as an example of that. So we've done everything in a timely fashion.
When did you submit your request for, that they waived?
Well, let's, you don't need to get into arguments on that part of it.
So, so again, uh, you know, there's been no, no attempt on our part to delay it. And, and my clients have been told you that they're under incredible financial pressure servicing the $2 million construction loans on this project, not being able to sell any units. All as a result of this lawsuit brought by Mr. Andrews over three years after the issuance of the permits?
All, all as a result of you're not doing what your, what your approved plans required and that you knew what they required. That, that's what.
Okay, then we're here to move forward from, from the past. Mr. Andrews.
I'd just like to point out to the board that the town council at the zoning board meeting told the developers to continue building on those building permits because the building permits were not.
Shouldn't have been issued.
And they had the right to at risk and we find ourselves here in this position.
They needed to make the buildings weathered tight so they wouldn't lose their toll.
Right, there's, there's timing on the construction. Now, we, we have time and considerations here for this, a, a request that you have in front of us due to the stay that you have. So we, we appreciate that you have those limitations. The, the problem that, that I guess I would have just blindly, not blindly signing a plan, but signing a modified plan, is that should the zoning board then determine through that review that there's a variance or something else required that wouldn't be reflected on the site plan? There's a potential that there might have to be some sort of tweaks or modifications to that plan that we would have endorsed, that we would then have to come back again.
So, so we're, we're not going to be seeking any variances from the zoning board appeals for all the reasons that I stated. And, and again, if, if they require something else, that we would bear the burden of coming back to the planning board. I, I want to show progress to the judge so that, that he'll, he'll continue to allow us to fix this problem rather than pulling the rug out from us and saying, well, I'm done with this. I'm going to enter an order, which then requires that we file an appeal to the appeals court and request the appeals court to file a request of stay. So we're just trying to be practical and as timely as we can.
I appreciate that. I would like to ask our town council whether or not, I know, I know we don't have a crystal ball, but do we have any understanding of how this would potentially play out? Should another request be asked of the court? Is it fairly standard to ask for continuations as the applicants are going through the permitting process?
It is, it is, because you are a town board, you're made up of volunteers. And I do think that the land court understands that and recognizes that. However, I, I, like I said earlier, I wasn't part of the litigation. Quite frankly, if they're not going to extend the 45 days, you have to make a decision tonight. You have one thing in front of you. You have an application in front of you that is seeking for you to waive the requirements of the zoning bylaw, which I've already opined that you cannot do. I suggest if you want to just take that up tonight, you could make a decision without prejudice. Then the applicant can do what they have to do and come back. You could also make a statement, as you just did, that you're not comfortable with waiving lines in case, until the ZBA takes a look at this. And, you know, denying that based on that fact. And then we wouldn't be stuck with a 48 section 16 situation where anything that's been acted on unfavorably cannot come back unless the, unless there's been a change. Um, I, I question whether that even actually applies in this situation because it's a site plan. But in the abundance of caution, if any denial was based on the ZBA acting and then the ZBA did act and you came back, it would be different. There would be different circumstances. So 48 section 16 would not pick it.
Okay. So with where we are today, would you currently entertain a continuation to allow the zoning board to provide their input? And based on their input, we would then act on the issues within our jurisdiction? Or would you prefer that we make a decision this evening?
So I, I just need some clarification. When you said the ZBA input, do you want us just to get some advisory opinion from the ZBA or are you?
I think we'd like you to go through the process with the zoning board of reports. We don't necessarily, I don't know that they need to issue their approval, but they need to have reviewed it. It needs to have been through the public process with them and they need to be at the point where they have evaluated and they're ready to act as well.
So what is in an applicant, so if you want a public process, what is the application for? What do, what do, what do you want me to ask the zoning board to do, please?
That's a good question.
Because I don't know what to ask the zoning board to do. You want them to, do you want them to?
We need them to review a plan.
A special permit to reference the plan that you have yet to approve?
Yeah, this special permit is based on a plan that shows lines. So, I mean, and again, I wasn't part of the litigation. I just came into this, but they never should have shown a plan to show it. They never should have presented a plan with lines. The plan shows lines. The judge said those lines show that they're separate lots. If they want to now not have separate lots, they have to amend their special permit, which references a plan that shows separate lots. And they have to amend or do a new site plan or a plan.
So sequentially, what would the appropriate process?
In my opinion, it would, you go through the zoning board of appeals because the zoning board of appeals says, here, we're going to do a special permit and this special permit requires that you either do individual lots or you don't do individual lots. And that's their call. They are the ones that determine that.
Can I just ask a question, so I don't?
Sure.
Does the planning board have the ability to take situations on, on a site plan review?
No, only, only what, they, they are allowed to condition site plan review, yes.
Can they condition site plan?
Yeah, they can condition it based on traffic. Yeah, they can condition it based on traffic, internal circulation, screening, trash removal, whatever.
So I think the underlying question is, could we condition the plan to be subject to other boards' review and approvals?
No, you cannot, because you are confined to section 28. Section 28 doesn't allow you to do that. So, once they go to the zoning board appeals, and the zoning board appeals says, yes lines or no lines, if they say yes lines, then they don't have to come back to you, because they have a site plan approval from you that shows lines. If they say no lines, they have to come back to you with a site plan approval that has no lines shown.
But if they say yes lines, there has to be a determination as part of that process that the lines are not, the lines have been presented in a way that complies with the zoning ordinance?
No, yeah, I guess that would be a third scenario. If for some reason the zoning board of appeals says that this is a yield plan, which a yield plan is when you have, for example, when you have open space residential developments, where you, the planning board, by special permit can reduce the density of lots, as long as you provide open space. There's a yield plan that says, I did a conventional subdivision, here are the amount of lots we could do.
Right.
And then they reconfigure the whole thing.
And, yeah, so they make the determination as to the verbiage relating to lots, single buildings on lots, all that's part of the.
That would be the third scenario.
And the second scenario?
So, the first scenario is they say you need individual lots. The second scenario is they say you do not need individual lots. Give us a plan with no lines. And then I guess the third scenario would be, we think that what you supplied to us was a yield plan.
And the first option of needing individual lots, that would be subject to subdivision, the way it's been interpreted through the current court proceedings, is that correct?
No, it's my understanding and from my reading that the judge said, no, that it's under seven, it's under section seven, which is a special density section, so it doesn't have to meet the requirements of frontage and area, things like that, that are, you would typically look at for a definitive subdivision.
But the zoning board would make that determination and interpret?
No, the judge already made that determination.
So then what would the zoning board be reviewing under option one with a plan showing individual lots?
Does 7D, 7-2DA require each building on an individual lot?
Okay, but they would make that determination, and if that were the case, then our originally approved plan would be valid at that point.
If they said, yes, you need to have each building on a separate lot? No. Your original.
Our original site plan was still invalid, and you wouldn't have to come back to us. The second option is zoning board determines that lots are not required.
That an individual lot means the entire tenant, 10-plus acres.
And individual lots for individual buildings are not required for these types of developments. At that point, then you would present the plan that you have with you today showing no lot lines. The building's all on one single lot, which we would then endorse if it continued to meet all the requirements of the site plan review as it relates to safety, access, all those components, which I think have already been reviewed.
Correct.
And then the third option is the yield plan, zoning board determines that.
But the judge did reject the yield plan. I, it's up to them if they want to present that, but the judge did specifically reject it in his decision.
Okay.
I'm sure someone in the front row will argue about that, but I'm pretty sure.
Can you read that?
It was specifically, I'm pretty sure it was specifically rejected.
Can you read it?
Yield plans don't become the plan of record, because it's the plan that you don't use.
So, the argument was not that it was.
It says right here in the decision on page 14, the court finds that the board did not issue those instructions merely to see a quote, "yield plan."
We didn't mean in a technical sense of an open space development. We just meant in a dense.
But that's a, that's a path on however it's presented to the zoning board, right? So then the question on the sequence of referencing a plan that has yet to be approved in a zoning decision, how would that conceivably done, be done? Would we then get to the point, like I alluded to, that zoning board has reviewed it, and we're aware of how they're going to act, at which point we would then act, and they would then act after us referencing the plan?
No, the zoning board acts, they decide if the existing plan is required or no lot lines are required.
Okay.
If the existing plan is required, they go on their merry way, and they're done. If no lot lines are required, they have to come back and show you a plan with 10 acres or 12 acres with no internal lot lines, just the buildings, and say, we want site plan.
And that could be done after the zoning board acts?
It has to be done after the zoning board, because the zoning board has to make the determination whether lot lines are necessary or not.
And the zoning board could reference the site plan review as yet to be performed by the planning board?
Yeah, I mean, this is one of the very few towns that requires site plan before a special permit. A special permit should always come first.
And I don't even know if it's required. I think it was just recommended as part of the original proceedings, and that was how the applicant was directed to proceed, which sounds like maybe that wasn't the right way.
That's why we're here.
Yeah. Okay.
So, Ken, I need a threshold question. Can we agree if we continue this request for modification, that this board will entertain the request for modifications, so we don't have to submit a third application? Because what you're asking us to do now is to submit an application for amendment to the site plan, which means we're not going to get heard by the ZBA for 60 days. Again, by the time you have to advertise and notice and publish. And so, and afterwards, we're going to have to come back to you. I'd like some assurance that we don't have to do this a third time, that this is a sufficient process. If we continue it, we extend the decision date, and we're going to have to extend the decision date for, you know, a sufficient period of time to accommodate a zoning of the process.
I appreciate that.
That at the end of that, you tell us, oh, yeah, you have to submit yet another application. I mean, it's really aimed to be.
Mr. Chairman, I think you clarified that earlier, that they did do a letter notice and say it was published, so I didn't know that.
So, I would be of the position, and I'll ask our other board members to opine, but I would be perfectly open to allowing the current application you have in front of us to be the valid application for the modification?
Yes, to have the modification in place of the original proposal.
And continuing it would allow it to continue under the current application that you have in front of us. And you wouldn't have to re-notify, you wouldn't have to wait for the hearing dates. We would just continue to the next available hearing, pending the timing on the zoning board review.
And perhaps at the end of this, you can incorporate into a vote the fact that you made that determination. Extend? How long?
I'll defer to the zoning board on what the submission requirements are for pre-submission filing prior to the hearings and when the next hearings are. Do you have the dates?
Hold on, where we have, what's the date of the next meeting?
Well, that deadline's passed.
Exactly.
Yeah, so November 4th, I think, is the next, after the October, obviously. I want to see, I don't know if that went, possibly the 18th of October?
Would you entertain a special hearing, almost like we had on this one, in the interest of advancing the process?
October 18th is a friend.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so.
Maybe it would be the 21st?
Maybe a Monday.
So, the 21st, because the 14th is a holiday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tell me on 21st.
Or is it 4th? I don't remember.
Tell me on 21st.
I don't know if other board members are here that would be able to opine on the availability.
I know myself, I'm not going to be available the beginning of October, so.
So that would be the outside time, right?
Deadline to file, right?
Yeah.
The deadline to file?
I know, I was.
And you have the materials already, right? So, I don't think that's a problem, right? But the hearing would be November 4th if we stuck to the traditional timelines?
November 4th, all right, right?
Yes.
That's fine, that would give them enough time to submit and give you enough, give them enough time to public.
And then our following public planning board hearing, do we know the next day of the planning board hearing after the November 4th?
Let's see, if Monday was the 4th, then we would have one, if 7th?
The 7th.
Usually, well, usually you're the second Monday, though, right?
So, I did.
Yeah, but if they're the 4th, then they must be the first Monday, and we'd be the first Thursday.
The first.
Make enough for 7.
The 11th?
It's called, so I give the deadline number, November 4th, meaning it's October 7th, because we have to advertise it for two weeks.
So, I'm sorry, the next planning board hearing after, so if we're talking about November 4th, the ZBA. And I'm sorry, the deadline for submission?
October 7th.
October 7th.
Terrifying, but I'm prepared.
So, it's October 7th's submittal deadline for a November 4th meeting, and then the planning board next meets when?
November 7th is what I heard?
Which is, assuming that that is.
Oh, planning board, yes.
First Thursday? Which is a conflict for me, I have a senior graduating from college for November.
Doesn't really sound important for yous.
I'm also not a.
Okay. Okay, I think we would certainly be willing to entertain an off-day meeting if we needed to, similar to this one?
Yep, I would be willing.
So that, if we're just looking at timing for the whole process, right? I think that would be the outside timing of it, if we needed to meet on November 6th?
What was the determination of the zoning board on the lot lines, the last go-through, I wanted to know?
I don't know, because lot lines were shown on those plans, so I don't know if they made a formal determination?
It sounds like the court decision is that the zoning board of appeals feels that the lot lines are not necessary.
I'm sorry, there's.
That the zoning board feels that the lot lines are not necessary.
That's what the ZBA determined?
That's the court, yeah, at court. So, that's the official standing, as far as I'm concerned, that the lot lines are not.
Right, we would be asking the ZBA to repeat the same decision it issued on remand that the lot lines are not required.
Yeah, I mean, that's the court, you know, that's it.
So, if we continued, we continue the 45-day period to November 15th, is that sufficient time?
I'm sure we'd be able to find another planning board hearing within that time.
45 days, and we can modify this. Again, I've got to sell this to Judge Vey. So, the 45-day period was extended through November 15th? So, you need to continue to a certain, a date certain, so we.
We can continue to the next hearing we have and just re-continue, if you'd like to do it that way.
Sure.
Just have it be an open agenda item, that we'll just keep continuing until the hearing date will be in front of us again. Yeah.
So, we're going to request that the planning board please continue the public hearing to its next continued date. The applicant will agree to extend the 45-day period through November 15th, and you can go down to the town clerk tomorrow and submit something in writing, because it's got to be in writing and stamped in. And we'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
The clerk's office is closed tonight, if that makes sense?
Yep.
And then we would simply request a vote, which is part of your motion, confirming that the board will accept our request for modification and act on it in a timely fashion after the zoning board acts, and that there's no need for us to file yet another application for site plan approval for the project.
Okay, noted. So, there was a crest that we make a motion to accept the applicant's request for modification, and a new submission for site plan review is not required? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I guess add again. I make a motion to extend or continue the public hearing until the next.
Well, before we continue, we need to accept the current request for modification and acknowledge that we are not requiring a new submission.
Yeah. The board will accept the request? Make a motion that the board will accept the request for modification.
And a new site plan review is not.
And a new site plan application is not required.
Do we have a second?
If we don't.
Okay. So, we can't act on that without, so. Oh, can I, can I second it?
Yeah.
All right. I make a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes two to one.
Can we get the no vote on the record, please?
Sure, there was a no vote from Amy Truitt.
Thank you.
And yes votes from Carlos Sculte and Mark Milice. There's also a second motion to continue the planning board meeting for Amanda's estate to the next available planning board meeting to be held.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Amanda Estates until the next scheduled planning board meeting?
Is there a second?
It has to be a date certain.
Which would be November?
Now, do we have the next planning board meeting? Now, 14 days from now?
So, it's November 7th, and no, right?
No, it's going to be the.
Next available.
Yeah.
So, it would be.
The calendar is.
Yeah, it's right behind us, seriously, yeah.
Okay, make a motion to continue the public hearing for Amanda Estates until October 3rd at 7:00 p.m.
All those, do I have a second? I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the record, there was a no vote from Amy Truitt, yes votes from Mark Milice and Carlos Sculte.
And do you have a form, a particular form that you want us to sign?
No, I think if you just type something up and sign it, I think that's good enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, one second.
Just, was, was the request for the extension, we have to?
Oh, yeah.
Two to one.
Yes, and then we make, do we have a motion to, we already made the motion to continue the public hearing?
Okay.
We're good, sorry, as part of the public process, we do that otherwise. Thank you. That was a long one.
No, I make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, there you go.
Aye, aye, second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.